One o'clock, we'll start today's meeting. We'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. For the record, let's note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Also, four health readings reasons behind the dividers now, but in the back of the room, there is an automatic defibrillator if anybody needs that for health reasons. And also, if you have a cellphone, I ask you to silence it or please turn that off. With that, we will go into the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. Item B is to call for a meeting and set Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 as a date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. And let me know for the record, under the minutes, there needs to be a correction just to change the letters. There's A, B in the minutes on items. Then it starts again, A, B, C. That should be D, E, F in regards to the order on the minutes. With that noted change, their motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Boyle is their second. Somewhere. Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any Board of Equalization-related matters not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item D is a resolution to approve application for tax exemption on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the Treasury. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
And adjourned?
And adjourned, yes.
Motion approved and adjourned by Commissioner Boyle is their second. Second by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. What's the will of the Board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle is their second. And by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. We'll go to item three, which is the report of the Director. Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I did come down with a summer cold here, so pardon me, my, uh, my voice this morning. I'll get through this. I have with me the report from last month, as well as this month. As you're aware, we had a, um, a couple of scheduling conflicts which prevented, um, prevented me from presenting the report to you last month in person. For expediency's sake, I will go over this month's report. If you have questions on last month's report, I have it here and ready to address your questions. You all have it, yes. All right. Enclosure number one. Entering our last month of the fiscal year, we are $31,783 under budget. This is a razor-thin margin. We will do all that we can to maintain that status throughout the last month of the year. We were over $300,000 under budget last month, but May had three pay periods within it, so that ate up a lot of our, our margin of error there. So we'll be, we'll be very close. Enclosure number two, community corrections. Four individuals served 57 days in the sanction center and 10 individuals served a combined 53 days in the transitional discharge center. These are our initiatives to try and move folks out of the jail and over to community corrections in ways that we hadn't previously to take a dent and a little bite out of the jail population. The 24/7 sobriety program had 73 admissions in May. That is an all-time record. So they've been very busy. There were 3,349 breath tests that were completed. Thirteen were positive for alcohol. There were 13 no-shows. The overall compliance rate was 99.3%. Thirty-six individuals were monitored for a total of 982 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows. There were zero tampering violations. And there were two alcohol violations. The overall SCRAM compliance rate was 99.8%. There were 543 saliva drug tests administered with six positive tests and 22 no-shows. There were 16 drug testing patches that were submitted for testing, and there were two violations. Just on another note, the, the drug testing portion of the 24/7 has, the judges have steadily increased their utilization of that, of that as a pre-trial monitoring tool. Work release admitted 50 individuals in, in May, and they can be, those work release clients donated 401 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 71 individuals. The reentry assistance program admitted 29 individuals, and one individual earned a GED. There were corrections programs in the jail, admitted 74 individuals. Four individuals earned a GED in the jail. And I had Heather Robinson, our GED instructor, come along this morning. She's in the audience, because I wanted to acknowledge her efforts. She's been working, doing double duty as our GED instructor in both buildings, in community corrections and in the jail since Barb Glazeski retired in June, or, excuse me, in December. And we have seen, not only has our productivity not suffered, it's actually increased. And she's done a fantastic job. She's with Justine Wall, who is our newly appointed reentry rehabilitative services administrator. Had to get that new job description right. But I wanted to give kudos to Heather and have her come up here and, and be recognized for that effort. We are still planning on filling that second GED position, but it's part of an overall reorganization that we're working on. Just all of the pieces of the puzzle haven't come together yet for us to, to, um, to make the moves we need to, to get, make that happen. But Heather has performed admirably for us in the interim, so thank you, Heather. Twenty-eight individuals in, in, in pre-trial services were referred for priority prosecution, and 436 bed days were saved. Three hundred and twenty-two individuals were placed on pre-trial release. Overall, during the month of May, 1,295 individuals were, were managed on pre-trial release with a 93% compliance rate. And 258 individuals visited the law library last month. The Department of Corrections was visited by auditors in early May for our, our second pre-audit. We will be receiving probably this month the report of their findings. Enclosure number four, personnel. We established a committee for hiring, um, we, basically just about a month ago. It was comprised of several lieutenants in the training department. We opened up this process to eliminate some bottlenecks in the, that we had had previously, which slowed down our hiring. I want to give this group of individuals a lot of credit. They've taken this, uh, this ball and ran with it. They have, they did over 80 interviews when, in about a three-week period for correctional officer candidates. As a result of their efforts, we anticipate a significantly large class of correctional officers to begin in early July. So that is a, a very successful organizational change that we've made that will continue, is already paying dividends, and we will do this going forward. So we will always have a more expedient response to applicants when they apply. In the past, they'd oftentimes waited several weeks or even months to hear from us, and most of them had already gotten a job by the time we gotten back to getting this process initiated. So this is a, a big step forward for us. We had 15 new correctional officers who graduated training in May, and they actually completed their first week, or their, completed their field training this past weekend, and they are on the floors as we speak. Through the month of May, the new officer mentoring program has maintained 100% success rate for staff retention for new, for new, for mentored officers. So far, we've had 31 officers who have been assigned a mentor, and as of this report, all are still employed and in, and in good standing. Most encouragingly, the first class who were signed, who were assigned a mentor, they all have collectively volunteered to be mentors themselves. They started, they received their mentors in January. We may have a class of upwards of 30 officers starting in July, so we will need their help to have enough mentors to go around for that large class. To put this in to a little perspective, um, this board has heard me talk about our retention issues from last year, where we lost 47 officers who worked for us for less than a year. As we're nearing the halfway point of this year, we, that number is on track to be about 20 if we continued. We lost some early in the year before we started the mentoring program. So we are doing a much better job, and I believe that we will continue to improve on our retention efforts as we continue to round out these efforts and, and launch new initiatives. Enclosure number five, population. We had 1,581 admissions. We had 1,612 releases. Our high count for the month of May was 1,266, and our low count was 1,165. May turned out to be a very good month for us population-wise. We did not even get below 1,200 at Christmas time, which is usually our traditional lowest dip in population. However, unfortunately, already in June, we have erased those gains, and we are up over 1,300. So our pop, our traditional summer peak, especially as we head into the College World Series time, where we experience higher populations, unfortunately, is still holding true. Our average daily population in May was 1,224. There were 309 custodial sanction bed days. The US Marshal population increased. The ICE population decreased. The felony pre-trial population decreased. The misdemeanor pre-trial population decreased. And the female population decreased. There were still three to four, depending on, um, on the day, female housing units open throughout the month. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,425 intake screenings, and there were 475 health and physical assessments completed. Inmates were sent out 27 times to the community for emergent medical care. Eleven of those were by 911. There were six hospital admissions, which resulted in 15 days of hospitalization. Douglas County is being assigned a new regional manager with Wellpath, our medical contractor. Wendy Mercer is taking over for Kim Girdis. They are both, Kim is still present, and as Wendy gets up to speed, Kim is taking on a different role within the Wellpath organization. And interviews for a new health services administrator are ongoing. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 158 initial psychiatric assessments, 204 initial mental health assessments. There were 27 mental health infirmary placements. Nine individuals were filed onto the Board of Mental Health, and four were placed in a long-term psychiatric facility. Other items of note for the month. We are currently working with human resources to update the job description for captain. As you're aware, I'm, I'm bringing on a third captain to increase specialization of supervision across a variety of areas. That job description had not been revised since 2007, so HR and I decided it was a good time to bring that forward and, and revise that. So hopefully, that will be posted within the coming weeks. Also in May, Douglas County was selected as the 12th county nationally to be recognized as an innovator county by, by the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of mentally ill individuals in our jail. While we are grateful for this recognition of our efforts to date, we still have very much to do. I look forward, and we all look forward, to overcoming this challenge that has plagued the Department of Corrections and jails across the nation for many years. Correctional Professionals Week was celebrated during the first week of May, and it was a resounding success. I want to give special thanks to our Honor Guard, the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Eight, and the African-American Correctional Officers Association for organizing and sponsoring events throughout the week. One of the things we added this year was a family night, where individual, where staff who their significant, their loved ones have never gotten to see where they work because of where they work, got to take tours of the jail. We did two tours. They were completely filled, so we anticipate doing that more and maybe more of them next year. I, I think it meant a lot to the staff, some of them who've worked there for 20 years, to get to finally show their family members where it is that they work. We're also going to work with, with the Honor Guard, the FOP, and the African-American Correctional Officers Association to plan morale-building events throughout the year and not just confine them to this one week. And with that, I am ready for your questions.
Commissioner Boyle, Morgan, Kavanaugh.
Well, first of all, Mike, thank you. That's, I am really appreciative of the efforts you're making to bring some fellowship among your, uh, your staff. I think that's incredibly important, and it sounds to me like you're really doing a great job. Uh, I mean, you really are. These are really progressive, and I like to see this in the families and the rest. Uh, what I would like to do is mention, I think that it's time for us, as a county board, to come over. And actually, it'll have to be a public meeting, which is okay. And I'd like, I'd like to include some of the people that you've selected in leadership roles and actually sit down with them, and I'll, we'll have lunch. I'll bring the bologna and, uh, no, I'll do something else. But anyway, I would like to do that, because it's a chance to kind of just talk to them and see how they're doing and let them know that we know they're alive and that we appreciate what they do, just like this morning. It was a good deal. Uh, I'm also continuing, and I know you are too, to be very concerned about the mental health difficulties at the facility. And I, uh, I was listening to NPR the other day, and there was a report of a state. I don't remember which state it was, doesn't make any difference. It might have been Portland, Oregon. But anyway, the number of people who are in state facilities who are awaiting placement in a mental health, it's just, uh, it's beyond the word crisis. It is so damaging to have people, and a lot of them were in solitary confinement, which just exacerbates the situation. Anyway, I just want to say I appreciate your attitude and the attitude of your staff about how you treat people that are mentally ill and the efforts you're making with limited resources and limited ability to place them in a facility that could help. So the treatment that you give them, they don't belong in jail, you know that. You act that way. But then the things you're doing are really good to try to, try to help, but it's, we need to step up, just like the slogan says, stepping up. And I want to take a moment to thank Commissioner Borgeson for bringing that to us and, uh, really accelerating our attention. But I appreciate what you're doing. I, it was really more of a comment than a question, and I just want to encourage you to keep it up. I'm really impressed, and we're very fortunate to have you and your staff doing the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And we'll schedule one of those lunches when it works for you and the Commissioners. Okay? Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
I'll echo somewhat what Commissioner Boyle said. We really do appreciate and respect what you're doing and your team's doing there. The GED program is so important, and again, that's really helpful for the inmates not to be repeating and have a revolving door. The other thing in the mental health area, which Commissioner Boyle touched on, and I know all of us have a real compassion about that. It looks like it's about 60% of the people that are there have that mental illness of some form. If that's accurate?
It, it, it's a little less than that, but it is a significant portion of our population. And really, the portion that we really need to be drawing our attention to is the, the number of people who have serious mental illness. Those are the ones who have to await placement. You know, the, the, the individuals who have, um, a mild forms, a milder disorders usually are not impacted by the waits for evaluations and placements. And it's the serious disorders that run 16, 17% of our population, which is still well over 200 individuals on any given day. That's the, the primary focus of what we need to be working on.
Well, on that one page, 46 of 47, where you show inmates diagnosed with mental illness, 684. Is that year-to-date numbers, or is that?
One moment, Commissioner. So there's, I need to work with Wellpath on correcting how they do their, the, the count on this.
Okay.
This is the total number of individuals who came to the jail during a month with the ment, with a mental illness. But you can't contrast that with the average daily population. You also, if you're going to count cumulative, you need to, you need to have cumulative on both, you know, on both ends. So the, 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 the total of men, it's still a serious problem.
Yeah.
Still a very serious.
I was looking at with 1,250 approximately there.
Yep. A more accurate figure is about, that number's out of about three, um, out of about probably 3,000 is that, you know, is where you would get that total. So that's everybody who was in the jail on the first of the month with a mental illness, plus everyone who came into jail during that month with a mental illness.
Well, no matter what, it's a real serious concern, and I know Sheri and others at the Health Center are working towards continued improvement. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
That's all.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this, uh, report. I, I noticed you, you've got some new formatting in here. That's good. A little more detail on, um, some areas. So relative to the budget information, um, go to page seven. If I can read this, and it's awfully small, um, out at the end there in the graph is your annual budget amount, and I, I believe it's $42,885.74. You see where I'm at on your graph? The extreme right?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
That's your annual budget, right?
Of the budget year that's just about to conclude.
Correct. So Corrections Department's costing about $43 million based on the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget.
That is correct.
And then if we go to the following page, page eight, and we look at the revenue page, this is revenue received, um, from sources other than Douglas County.
Correct.
Okay. And you get some federal grants, and you get some jail housing reimbursement from the city and from ICE and from other entities. And bottom line, all of that together aggregates, it appears to be at the bottom of that column,
Correct.
Okay. So taking that overall budget of $42.8 million and subtracting that outside sources revenue of $16.6 million, the Douglas County portion of direct payment to run the Corrections Department is about $26,188,252, more or less.
I'll take your word for that, sir.
Okay. And that's pretty consistent. That's how the department runs, basically. And so we're, uh, putting that in. And I'd ask, uh, Mr. Lorenz, that $26,188,252,000 from Douglas County, is that general fund?
Yes.
There is a, an additional subsection of that total that is from the inmate benefit account, which comes from, it, it's not a huge amount, but it does, the actual tax dollars used are somewhat less than the figure that you just quoted.
Okay. Where is that inmate benefit figure represented?
The day I told Amber she didn't need to come.
That's fine. I mean, is it over a million dollars?
It probably not, but it's close to it.
Okay. When you get it, if you could send it to me, that's fine. But we're in the ballpark there at $26 million, right?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Lorenz, as far as our departments go, um, is the Department of Corrections the largest department in terms of we put general fund dollars into it?
Yes, for general fund, yes, yes.
Relative to the overtime question, and I'm glad to see we're getting, you know, pretty specific information on that. I see on, um, page 10, where you have this overtime graph, it seems to be a progression over time to increase. But if, if I'm reading this correctly, uh, you say in here, I think on page 12, that overtime is going at about 3,700, a little more than 3710, um, per pay period. That's hours per pay period.
Correct.
Over 3,700 hours per pay period. Out of a total of, I think, it's like 33,000 hours per pay period. So about 10% overtime per pay period. 26 pay periods in a year, so that's, if that's an average, that's about 96,460 hours per year in overtime.
That's correct.
And that's been creeping up, according to this graph.
It has. You know, we, um, I'm optimistic that we will see the trend reverse, be, given our recent successes in staff retention and our accelerated efficiency in hiring. So if we can, if we can build upon what we've just started in those, we would hope to turn that tide over the course of the upcoming fiscal year.
And we live in that hope. So that brings us to the next question regarding personnel, because these are directly related. So on page nine, where you give us the staffing outline here, we heard from you that in 2018, we lost 47 corrections officers, most of which or all of which had been there a year or less.
So actually, we lost 89. Forty-seven of them worked there for a year or less.
Okay. And so far this year, is, is it 20? Was that the number?
Yeah. Well, of, of, of officers, I don't have the total number we've lost, but I, I checked on the, our new hires, because that was the, my point of emphasis, is retaining the new staff. And we have been doing much better. So far this year, if I go back for an entire year, back before I was the director and before we started the mentoring program, we had lost, we have lost approximately 10 officers who started within the last 12 months.
who started within the last 12 months. We are, like, in 2019, if I take out those, the last five months of last year, the trend is even better than that.
So we are on track, if I understand what you're, what you're saying correctly, we are on track to come down from losing 47 year or less new people to losing something like 20 year or less new people.
That's my hopes.
Yeah, okay. So trying to reconcile these two graphs, the upper column of numbers and the lower kind of a point graph, I'm, I'm looking at authorized strength in the upper column says 448 officers on hand, 413 officers, but in trying to reconcile that with the lower point-to-point graph, it appears that they, the authorized strength there is like, more like 375, and the on-hand is more like 345.
So the, the, this, the, the table includes all positions, including myself, support staff, non-officers.
Right.
That's where you get to that 448. The current fiscal year, we are authorized 374 officers. That's the, where that, the graph below.
The lower graph. And those are like CO1, CO2s, like.
Up through the rank of lieutenant.
Okay. And in the, in the upper list, where you list everybody, the entire complement, you show percentage of, I guess the percent towards the authorized level being 100%, we've got 100% of lieutenants, 95% of sergeants, corrections officers, 91%.
Classification officers.
Classification officers, 112%. Inmate account services, 100%. Records tech, 2, 88%. Record tech, 1, 100%. Management and support, 84%. So for an overall of everybody, you and everybody, it's at 92. But if we applied that same kind of percentage to this lower graph of, of the actual corrections officers, which line of that percentage applies to that lower graph? Is it the, the CO?
It would be a combination of the correction officer, plus the sergeant, plus the lieutenant. That'd be an average of those.
Okay. But the correction officers would be the largest class of that, by far.
Absolutely, by far.
And they're at 91%.
Correct.
Right. So if I'm looking at this historical, and this is really good graphic, trend over time, we go up and then we go down. We go up and we go down. We go up and we go down. And this, you know, feast and famine seems to be consistent.
It is. So you can see, the sharp increases are when we bring a new hire class on. And then, for various reasons, we, we attrit downward until we bring another new hire class on. And our hope is to, we will always have people retire and move on, or this isn't the right thing for them, it's either their decision or our decision. So there'll always be attrition, there will always be hiring, but we hope to make the downward trends more gradual, so that we don't have to depend on these large correctional classes several times a year.
So based on all of that, these frontline officers, the CO1s and CO2s, sergeants and lieutenants, are authorized currently at about 374, but on hand are about 345.
That's, as of today, that's about accurate.
So about 30 below authorized level.
And if you recall, in our budget presentation for the upcoming fiscal year, we explained how, since the jail is full and remained full, that our, we actually, to eliminate the vast majority of overtime, it, we would have to get up closer to 400 officers. We asked for 22 additional officers to close that gap and reduce overtime costs.
Then, you know, that's very justified.
So we're about 50 short.
Because these two numbers are, are linked. If we are 30 below authorized strength, and we're 96,000 hours overtime per year, those are linked up.
Absolutely.
If you do those 30 people, that 96,000 hours of overtime comes way down.
Correct.
Right. And that 96,000 overtime, much of that is forced overtime. These people don't have a choice. They have to work.
It's a combination of voluntary and mandatory. There are times where people are signing up for the voluntary to avoid the mandatory. And so, yes, one way or another, people are working more than we think they should have to.
Okay. And this kind of brings us to the, the final point I want to talk to you about, which is the population. So on page 35, where you get into the population numbers, again, I really like the new format. If the type could be a little bigger for my old eyes, that would be.
I'll, I'll make note of that, sir.
All the better. Provide magnifying glasses.
Sure.
So page 35, we have a May 2019 population of, I think it's 1,223.
Correct.
Inmates. And then on 41, we give the average daily population of 1,272, which is full, right? I mean, what's the, what's the maximum population that we can accommodate at our correction center?
Our listed capacity is 1,453, however.
Okay.
We're reduced by two housing units, so we lose about 70 beds.
Right.
And you also have individuals who cannot be housed with other individuals, so we, anything up, anything that, when we get over 1,300, especially as we approach 1,350, we are essentially bursting at the seams.
And two months in the last fiscal year, you were at 1,300 or above.
And we are this morning.
Okay. And this is pretty consistent. You never, ever, it seems, go much below 1,250.
Rarely.
Yeah. So we are at maximum capacity. We are understaffed by at least 30 pretty chronically. We're racking up 100,000, more or less, hours of overtime per year. And relative to the, the point that Commissioner Boyle brought up regarding our mentally ill inmates, we have those diagnosed, this is again on page 41, with mental illness, out of this population of 1,200 and some, 872. And that's an incredibly high population of mentally ill people in our correction center. And that, again, is fairly consistent as well. Is that right?
That's, yes, that is consistent.
We're running at 47% mentally ill people in our correction system. Of those, you have a graph, it's kind of interesting, on page 41, of the inmates diagnosed with mental illness, 872 that we just talked about, and of those long-term psych facility transfers, three. Which is very interesting, because as you probably know, we don't have any long-term psych beds in Douglas County. Where do these folks go?
By and large, these are folks who are going to Lincoln Regional Center.
Okay. And there's a massive waiting list for Lincoln Regional Center, is there not?
That is correct.
Like six months plus, maybe?
Oftentimes, yes.
Right. So out of this enormous population, 1,272, and the subpopulation of 872 with mental illness, we're able to actually find long-term beds for three of them. No, no fault of our own, but that's.
Yes, it's a pretty dire.
That's what's available, and that's in Lincoln, and that's with the six.
And to be fair, not everybody who has a mental illness is in need of a long-term placement.
Right.
But some of them are, and that's, and more than three. I'll put it at that, and that, hence the waiting period.
Listen, thanks. This is a much improved and clearer report. I commend you and your staff for putting this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Don't see any other questions?
Thank you.
Is there a motion adjourned? There's a motion by Commissioner Borges and a second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now have roll call for the, we'll call order to Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting roll call.
Commissioner Borges, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here, item A, medicine, item one, medicine claims, letter A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Per proof.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go to item two, which is the consent agenda. We have six items. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I have a couple of questions on a couple of items.
Okay, hold on. One o'clock. Please continue.
On item B, resolution further supporting the mission of the Omaha Community Council for Racial Justice and Reconciliation, and requesting that the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission authorize the use of Douglas County courthouse and/or grounds on September 28th, 2019, on behalf of Douglas County. This is a centennial commemoration of the infamous lynching of Omaha resident Willie Brown on the courthouse grounds 100 years ago, this September. My grandfather, who served on the Omaha Fire Department, responded to that riot, where they not only killed Mr. Brown, strung up the mayor, but tried to burn down the courthouse. And I, I think it's really important that the public know that we're going to take a major step to remember what happened. And there's a famous saying relative to the Holocaust remembrance, "Never again." And that's what this is all about. We're going to have a major ceremony here on our grounds where this happened, this atrocity occurred 100 years ago. We're going to remember that, and I think that we're going to take into account how far we have come. It's important that we recognize what happened in the past, and it's important that we recognize the progress we've made since then. So I want to commend Commissioner Rogers for putting this on the agenda, and all of those who are working on this. I intend to lend my help as much as I can to make sure that this commemoration of the centennial, of this horrific atrocity, is appropriately commemorated by, by all of us as a community. And it's used as not only a teaching moment, but a moment of reconciliation, that we find common ground as a community, and we say, "Never again." By knowing what happened, we recognize that we are turning our back on that, and we're moving forward into a better future. So I commend you for, for putting that on there. I have one other comment relative to number F, and this is the reappointment of Mike Boyle, the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission. And I want to recognize that, that this, the history of this particular appointment is inextricably tied up with a later item on our agenda, the resolution relative to the $114 million bond proposal that I've consistently opposed. In January, Commissioner Boyle, serving on the building commission, voted against the approval of that by the building commission, and it failed. The next day, Commissioner Kraft indicated that he wanted to replace Commissioner Boyle with himself on the building commission, and Commissioner Boyle was left in no, I think, uncertainty that he would be replaced if he ever voted against this proposal again. Most recently, the building commission entertained this motion again, and Commissioner Boyle changed his vote from no to yes, and it passed. And since then, as you can see, Commissioner Boyle's being reappointed, I guess as a reward for his changed vote to the building commission again. I'm going to vote no on that. I don't think that's an appropriate way that we should run our building commission appointments, but I just want to let people know that's the brief history of what went on with this appointment. I'd ask that that be removed for a separate vote.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, we'll go to the, you want to comment on F?
Yes, I do.
Let's separate that out first. There's a, is, right now, we'll make the amendment to take F out. There's a motion to approve them all. So if the clerk's fine, we'll take F out?
We already.
You already take it? Okay. We'll vote on the agenda minus F. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item F?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I, I can appreciate what Jim said, and I realize what this may supposedly look like, but I, it's really, it's really unfortunate. I, I voted my conscience on all of these votes that I took. I take this responsibility very seriously. As Jim knows, I, I did meet with residents. I listened to them, their concerns. I also listened to the difficulties of what we have with the Juvenile Center and how our youth, how our children in this community are being treated. And what I've come to is, what I came to was a conclusion that this was a good approach. There were a lot of changes made in how children are being treated, very progressive, very good. Commissioner, as a matter of fact, Commissioners Rogers and Borges have worked for years to come to this conclusion, and they didn't do it lightly. So I, I understand why Jim would say those things, but that's just not really how it happened. Just for the record, I'm not for sale, and I'm not even for rent.
Commissioner Morgan?
I've known Commissioner Boyle for over 40 years, and he and I, our families have known each other. And if someone thinks that one of us is going to vote and change our vote, or do something because of some appointment, to be on the whatever board, is just really not the way it is. And knowing Commissioner Boyle as I do, he could care less, I think, if he was on the building commission or not, and would not vote for such a major, major improvement project to our system. And the other fact is, all of us on this board have been for the 90-some million dollar Hall of Justice, that's a total necessity, and that's been said months ago here. So I guess I just don't like the challenge of someone's integrity and what they might do here. So I just wanted to state that, and appreciate Commissioner Boyle always voting his conscience, which sometimes I disagree with, but I know he's voting the way he thinks is the right thing for this community. And his service to this community has been never-ending since about the 70s, when I first became acquainted with Commissioner Boyle, and I respect him greatly and always will, period.
Commissioner Kraft?
And PJ, I agree, 100%.
Commissioner Borges?
And I will echo that as well. And, I mean, I've known Mike since I've been on this board, or since he came on the board. I've gotten to know him, and his heart and passion and will to serve the people is up front and foremost, and it sickens me that a negative would be put on an appointment like this, to an important spot that he has served admirably. So thank you.
There's a motion, second.
Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, other commissioners voting yes.
Okay, I'm going to make a move to the agenda. We have a member of our board that has the honor of greeting the president, so I want to make sure that that person can get there. We're going to go to item C, under the Child New Services Commission, which is item one, resolution approving 17 supplemental agreement among the City of Omaha and the County Board and Douglas County Building Commission. County Board and Douglas County Building Commission to provide the issuance of up to the stated principal amount of $114 million for new bonds. And the rest is stated there respects to the courthouse, civic center, and other things of that sort. With that, let me note for the public, I'm going to allow two minutes from the public to address this if they want, because we've been to this five times, so I want to give everybody a share of that. We'll ask for the will of the board, and then we'll go to the public. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Craft. Anybody from the public who want to address it, you'll have two minutes, and then we'll go from there.
Good morning. Doug Kagan, 416 South 130th Street, speaking on behalf of Nebraska, excuse me, Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our taxpayer group is requesting the County Board today to separate the juvenile detention facility planning from the other justice facilities' expansion. Whereas there appears general agreement on the need and location for justice facility expansion, the juvenile detention improvement has generated enormous controversy. Much intelligent reasoning and financial analysis has recommended an expansion at the Woolworth Street site. The number of detention units and scope of detention has generated much debate. The county is still in the process of finding and utilizing alternatives to detention. Hopefully, the county will find still more alternatives in future months. However, the recidivism rate seems substantial for several alternatives presently used. These contrasting factors lead taxpayers to voice and uproar of concern about both the size and accommodations of a new juvenile facility. These concerns have not yet been satisfactorily resolved, in our opinion. Therefore, we urge commissioners to vote on the other justice facilities at a determined cost and allow additional time for public deliberation on a juvenile detention center that would result in the ability for informed voters to decide the issue next spring at the ballot box. Thank you.
Seeing now, Commissioner Craft.
Yes, and I've got a number of issues. One is Plan B. There is no Plan B. And if we were to do what some people suggest, where we take to the vote of the people, and the vote says no, then what? In 1974, maybe 75, this building we're sitting in was financed by the Public Building Commission bond issues. We've gone through 16 amendments, and the 16th Amendment, Commissioner Kavanaugh voted in favor of it on February 26th. So we were all in favor. It was unanimous. Now, as far as controversy, any politician should be aware that he can confront controversy, and controversy should not. It absolutely should not affect our vote. It could affect our way of thinking, but it should not stop us from doing that which is right. And we have gone over and over and over this. And some of the, I'll say, one commissioner seems to have a short memory, that we've gone through five votes. And the majority of the council and majority rules is what's putting this forward. So we could talk forever, and I think I'm going to today, just because I feel like it. We will not be building the juvenile center right off the bat. We're going to start with the correction center. We have two, perhaps three, years to prove ourselves. We've already started and implemented some of the programs. July 1st, a new law takes effect that'll affect the number of youth being arrested and put into our correctional facility. The police will not, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Borges know more about this than I do, but a certain class of juvenile offenses, you know, we arrest juveniles for something we don't arrest adults. An adult does not get arrested for running away from home. An adult does not get arrested for many of the crimes, we call them status crimes. Well, they shouldn't, youth shouldn't be arrested either. We have already started implementing these agreements. And we have two to three years to prove ourself before the juvenile center will be started. The thing is, now is the time. The vehicle to do this is non-controversial. It was set for this purpose, this building, and all the improvements to this building. And was, I believe, the parking garage was financed through the bond, the parking garage across the street. So because there might be some misunderstanding with the public, or misunderstanding with the commissioner on the purpose of this and how it works, we cannot allow that misunderstanding to, which has created controversy, to affect our vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Oh, 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 wait. I've got one thing. If I may, since some commissioners like three-word phrases, not building this now is ill-advised, irresponsible, and downright wrong. We need to build it now. Irresponsible, ill-advised, and downright wrong. Should I repeat that 31 times? No. Okay. I was told no. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. You know, coming up on this vote again, it's, it often reminds me of a Russian novel that has 100 chapters, and we're in chapter 75. The discussion has been had, and I think everybody's positions are established, but I just want to recap that this basically revolves around some important points. One is a conflict of interest between the interests of a private corporation and a public board, and the sharing of members of the public board as members of the private corporation. The big, important point to recall here is that a yes vote on this motion today is a yes vote for a property tax increase for a largely unnecessary no-bid contract construction scheme with no public meeting requirements and no public record requirements. No vote of the people. There have been, on numerous occasions, public hearings and public presentations of a better, cheaper, and smarter way to go. If people haven't been able to recollect those, I'm sorry that their memories are impaired, but those have been held all over the county over the past 12 months. And all the people who came to those pretty much understand that there are better, cheaper, smarter ways to pursue this large, unnecessary property tax increase. This isn't over yet. This board may vote to go forward. It has before. I will not. I'm not going to vote for a large, unnecessary property tax increase when there's a better, cheaper, and smarter alternative. But the city council is going to have a say on this, and I think that the people will be heard there, because the city really doesn't have any reason to vote for a large, unnecessary property tax increase on the county. There's nothing in it for them. And we're going to make that case clear to them. They have been receptive to the alternatives that have been put before this board and everybody else in Douglas County with ears to hear. And you may see a different result. It's not over yet. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I would like to ask Commissioner Kavanaugh a question. I believe I'm accurate when I state this, and I just want you to answer. I'm pretty sure you supported numerous times the Hall of Justice, which is 90-some million dollars of this project, and I stand to be corrected by other commissioners on that statement. And I'd like to know how you could support that, because for sure, there's not a way that we can come up with 90-some million dollars without a tax increase. So am I accurate that you support the 90-some million dollars?
No, you're not. If you'd been to any of the numerous hearings that we held on the alternative, you would have seen that the alternative involves a substantially smaller courthouse annex. It does involve a courthouse annex, and I think that we agree on the necessity of that. But the bloated tower proposed by the private corporation, Burlington Capital, HDR, Peter Keewitt and Sons, on no-bid contracts is not what I support. I understand you, having served on both this board and the private corporations' board, are totally in support of that. But that's only going to result in the maximum property tax increase unnecessarily for the property tax owners of Douglas County. So no, I don't.
Now, I want any other commissioner to tell me that I was wrong in stating that he supported the 90-some million dollars, if there are some others that share his view that he didn't support the 90-some million dollar Hall of Justice.
Avoiding my turn.
So, anyway, we know that's necessary for probation, public defender, county attorney, et cetera, across the street. Okay.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. That was last week that he supported it at the Building Commission meeting, when I had a very hard time pinning Commissioner Kavanaugh down, because he keeps speaking against the tax increase and against, you know, he's making the world believe that this tax increase is about a juvenile detention center, when the reality is, of the 1.1 cents necessary to service the debt from this bond, from the county, nine tenths of a cent of that is for the courthouse annex. And I did ask repeatedly, trying to figure out for sure where his position is, which is a good trick, and at the Building Commission last week, he did support the Building Commission moving forward with the courthouse annex. That was last week. Who knows now? So what was at issue was simply the juvenile detention center, which only requires two tenths of a cent of an increase to service the debt on. That was the only area of conflict that we had at the Building Commission meeting. Everybody there, everybody in the audience even, who was there to oppose this, spoke in support of the Building Commission moving forward with the courthouse annex. Every person there gave lip service to supporting that. The only thing at issue is where do we put the juvenile detention center? And do we fix up, try to fix up what we've got and leave it out by itself in a remote location? Or do we co-locate it with the courthouse annex that everybody supports? Juvenile justice reform, we are on the brink of having an opportunity to make significant improvements like we've never seen. The biggest impediment to juvenile justice reform in Douglas County is Jim Kavanaugh and his own agenda. And it is unfortunate that that's how it's playing out. It's unfortunate that everybody agrees on the courthouse annex, on paying for it, recognizing it's going to take a tax increase to pay for it. Everybody involved has given lip service to supporting that, understanding the concept, understanding the need, wanting to move forward to address this. All that is at issue is, what do we do with the juvenile detention center, and where should it be? Juvenile justice reform says it needs to be co-located. This is the logical time to move forward with that. So it's hard, hard to realize that we all agree on over 80% of what's on the table here, or at least give lip service to agreeing.
I want to also state the fact that all, I think, most of us attended, I know I attended all of them, our town hall meetings. And when we were at Metro, it was brought up there that night, evening, and I know Commissioner Boyle, all of us were there. I think Mr. Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kavanaugh couldn't attend that meeting, but the fact was brought out by the opposition that the cost would be $27 million, and I recall our numbers accurately, I believe. And the cost for this, with the $5 million contribution, was $22 million to have it co-located, which means daily, as Brad Alexander, our director, stated at this board meeting probably a year ago, that every day they're transporting people, young people down here, where that would not be taking place, which should save us several hundred thousand dollars a year, from the Sheriff's Department. That number was stated. So we actually are spending less than remodeling the present facility. So just want to thank you for your comments to state it.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
The position that I've had has been pretty clear all along. Unfortunately, the commissioners who are convinced that the private corporation's building scheme is the way to go have done a great job of trying to obscure the fact that what we've proposed is a smaller courthouse annex, housing the separate juvenile court, their administrative services for a lot less than $96 million, using some properties that we've acquired in the course of this scheme downtown, including the MUD headquarters and the OHA headquarters, which commissioners here are intimately familiar with, real estate transfers on those, to house our attorneys, county attorney and public defender, and then refurbishing properties, again, that we own at 42nd and Woolworth, to make the detention center look more like a junior high school than a kids' jail in a cell block downtown. Everybody's aware of that. You want to conflate different things with different things, that's fine. It's only meant to confuse the public. The public's aware that what's being voted on here is a construction scheme with no-bid contracts by a private corporation who will run the expenditure of public funds with no vote of the people. That's going to be great for the bond council. It's going to be great for the financiers. It's going to be great for the architects and engineers. It's going to be great for the construction people who get these contracts with no bid, no public meetings, no public records requirements. It's going to be lousy for the taxpayers. It's going to be lousy for the kids who have to go to the cell block downtown. It's going to be lousy for the neighborhood downtown, which is going to be spoiled with yet another jail in a, in a area that's trying to turn around and develop and pay taxes. So that's the clear position. I understand that it makes my colleagues uncomfortable to have the public aware of what's really going on here, but that's what's going on here. You're getting a large, unnecessary property tax increase that's benefiting some construction interests on a building contract. That's what you're getting. What you're not getting is the best thing that you could have for the kids, for the community, for the taxpayers. Simple as that.
Let me say before we vote, just to correct the record, the stated conflict of interest is no conflict of interest. The authorizing body of the state that governs elected officials on conflict of interest did not even take up the case because there was no interest. And note that this noted to private corporation as a nonprofit entity. By the record over the country, that method of operating has saved counties across this country millions of dollars because of the fact of the design bill concept and what it used to contain cost. That's a proven fact, and you can ask around for that. You know, in regards to the interests of downtown, I think our jail has been there over 30 years. That hasn't stopped any development from happening in that respect. And, you know, I would say in some respects, the, the best thing for kids is not to be in detention. Most of the most experienced people in the field of engineering and architecture have stated publicly that it would cost more to rehab a facility than it would to build a new. And the illusion that the kids will be going outside and playing and frolicking in this atmosphere is absolutely wrong. They don't go out there now. So, you know, the best thing for any of these kids is to be at home. For those kids that are not by, they need to be at home with their family being treated. And there's all signs that says that a kid that spends one day in detention comes out worse, potentially worse than they were when they in. So I don't think you get into building a baby jail by reducing beds, and reduction of beds is part of reform. So with that...
Commissioner Borges.
I just want to state again the three goals of the project, and that is, the number one is to keep kids out of the detention center. End of story, period. That's the first thing. The second thing is, once they get in there, to make sure that we move them through the process as fast as possible, so they don't have to stay in there, that we have the services that they need in the com- that they need in the community to go to when they leave there. And thirdly, that once they do leave, we keep them out, that they don't recidivate back. And that means not only looking at the child, but looking at the family as a whole through this whole entire process. This is, as Commissioner Duda said, the time to do juvenile justice reform. We've been working on it and working on it and working on it, and across the country, it's been done and we're behind. And I think if you muddle through and peel back all of the nonsense that's been spewed out here, I think every single person in this room would agree that the best thing is for a child not to be there. The best thing is for a child to be at home with their family, with their loved ones, in services, with services. That's going to help them change their behavior and make their lives better and the quality of their life better. And just think of how far along we'd be if this nonsense wasn't on the table on this project. We'd be a lot farther along than we are right now. But it's a good thing, and it's a needed thing. We don't even have a jail. It's a detention center. It's where youth are put, placed, until they go to their next placement. So, again, nonsensical talk about a kiddie jail, a kiddie sale, jail sale. Again, that's very frustrating because every single one of us that support this have the kids and the families' best interest. That's the bottom line.
Commissioner Borges.
I agree with Commissioner Borges, and I, you know, I, I asked a lot of questions and came to the conclusions that I did. I could not agree more. The, the need to change the way we treat our children is absolutely essential, and this plan does that. And it offers so many alternatives to incarceration. There will still be the need for people who, young people who commit very serious offenses to be held. But this, there already have been some cases where young people were picked up by the Omaha police and they were not taken to the detention center. They were taken to Child Savings Institute and other places, and, and it's working already. And that means that that child avoided some trauma, which is so prevalent and so, taken such a front space in how we treat people. All of us, to one extent, have, some extent have suffered trauma, whatever it may be, and, and we need to be helped to get through that, and that's what this is all about. So, it's an opportunity to change the way we're treating the children in our community. And that's what really moved me to come to the conclusion. So, I, I support what Commissioner Borges said. It, this, you know, we have more beds than we started out with. The Omaha police were involved in that, and I was involved in making that happen. And the, and the group decided, yes, we probably do need more, and that, and things changed. So, it's an opportunity for us to get this done, and I, I am in support of that. I've come to the conclusion. And, you know, you know how converts are. So, that's where I, that's where I am. Thank you.
There's a motion, second.
There's a public comment.
Larry, you got a minute, because technically I asked everybody to come first, and per the rule, that's what it is, but-
I'm sorry, I walked in late.
No, you were sitting there when I said it, but, okay. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh votes no. All other commissioners voting yes, motion passes.
We're going to go down to human resources and then come back up. Item G is the human resource report. Item one is the weekly personnel report. As submitted, legislative's out of session, there's no legislative issues in that regard. And item three is the 2019 legislative session report presented by Mr. Sean Kelly and Ms. Julia Plucker. For Kelly Plucker, Commissioner Borges, and do you want to say anything before Metro?
Well, as they approach the podium, oh, I don't see Sean. He might have went to-
You have good timing.
Yeah, he's left you. He's left you to the wolves. Yeah. I, I just want to say thank you to Julia and Sean for the great work that they did on behalf of the county this legislative session. As always, it's a tough one, and as we've talked many times, it seems our relationship with the state has become more fractured than a true partnership. But with them at hand, we are able to get some pretty good work done down there. They do, again, a great job for us, and we appreciate that. It doesn't stop just because the legislature stops, and there's lots of interim studies that are probably going to be of interest to us, and conversations and work that go on through now until the next session starts with senators in terms of what our initiatives or priorities will build for next year. But I just wanted to say thank you very much for what you've done for not only the board, but the taxpayers of Douglas County.
Well, thank you. Good morning. Sorry, I was on the phone in the hall there, so I apologize for being a little late here. Well, good morning, Sean Kelly, 2804 South Eighty-seventh Avenue, appearing today on behalf of Kelly Plucker, registered lobbyist for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. As you all are aware, the Nebraska Legislature adjourned on May 31st, signing die, which was the eighty-fourth legislative day, six days early prior to what they were scheduled to adjourn, which was June 6th. That gave the governor an opportunity to pocket veto a couple of bills, which, which he did. They were of no consequence to Douglas County, but nonetheless, that's the circumstance of, of how the session ended. Give you a broad overview of the 2019 legislative session. There were seven hundred and thirty-nine bills introduced, two hundred and fifty-two of those bills were passed, seven constitutional amendments were passed, and only, or I'm sorry, seven constitutional amendments were introduced, only one of them had passed. For context to, an overview of Douglas County's positions, in sum, this board took positions on seventeen bills. Of those seventeen, twelve were support positions, and seven of those twelve passed. So, as many of you have served on this board for a long time, that's, that's a really high clip for what, what we usually experience at the legislature. Of the seventeen, five were opposition positions, and one of those passed. To provide an overview of those bills that we spent the majority of our time on, two, the, two bills, as you all are aware, were really spearheaded by us. Those were LB 446, bill by Senator McDonnell, to clean up the LB 605 fund passed in 2015 for our Department of Corrections in order to get some reimbursement or at least some dollars to offset the increase in jail population. So, we were successful in getting some amended language into the biennial budget, which will provide counties, not just Douglas County, but all, all across the, the state if they have any increase in jail population. And those funds can be used for existing programs. So, I think that's an important piece of that program that was missing, that we had experienced from the department getting some feedback. So, hopefully going forward, that'll be a more efficient program and hopefully help Director Myers and his staff alleviate some of their overcrowding. Next was the LB 522. That was a civil, civil service commission bill, which, an amended version passed on that regarding the human resources director reporting to the Douglas County Board. And those were really the two bills that this board asked us to, to focus on this session. So, I think you should be commended for that legislative agenda. When we have a focused agenda, we're really able to, I think, have more successes down there. Lastly, LB 237, which is a Douglas County, or a county treasurer issue regarding the commissions, going, starting in 2020, our Douglas County Treasurer will have an increased commission, which will be to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis. So, that's a broad overview of, of the session we had. I'm, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I'd also like to thank all the commissioners for your support and the, the support of the staff. It's a twenty-four seven cycle down there for when the legislature's in session, and we need to get information timely, committee testimony, and, and you guys are great in assisting in that.
Commissioner Borges.
Just the, so, we have the listing of the interim studies, and I think maybe if we highlight the ones we want to watch or go to, and then, of course, you always give us the when it's going to happen.
Sure.
But again, those are very important to attend and pay attention to, so.
Yeah, so, I can work with Marcos to create a suggested list, and if you guys want to narrow it or broaden it, that works for us.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Commissioner Borges.
Again, I want to thank you and Julie for your work, and Marcos also working with you on B, our behalf. Work with us to be sure we do a breakfast with the state senators, and I want you to tell us the date that's best-
Okay.
-when they're not as busy. So, if we need to do that earlier, you know, in August or September or something, let us know that. I think that's a good thing out at the UNO alum house. We've done it before. Let's make sure, if you think we should do it, that we do that with our group here in Omaha. That'd be helpful.
No, that is a good thought. The, the interim seems to shrink year after year. So, the sooner you get started, the better.
Commissioner Borges.
Well, I want to add my thanks to you. You've really, you're doing a terrific job. And, you know, the, the other Kelly that's kind of in the background did a great job as well. So, it's, it's been a long fruitful relationship with you. You're accessible and you respond, and you're really, you're talented at what you do, so I really appreciate that, and I'm glad that you're working with us. So, keep it up.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go back up to item four, which is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on border-related matters not listed on the county board's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
I have one comment I'd like to make.
A point?
Okay.
I'd like to mention a, a person who I knew very, knew well, and I know his family even better, but Stanley Slossberg died recently, and just a really great example. And I bring him up because with all the discussion that took place with the city council over landlords and so forth, he was the landlord of landlords. I mean, really a wonderful reputation. I observed his sons with him during hearings. I wasn't involved in what they were doing, but I happened to see, when he left, I was very impressed, both his sons, David and Richard, kissed him goodbye on the cheek. And I was so impressed with that kind of relationship, that they would do that in public, very quietly, but off to the side. I, I was just impressed with how they treat one another, and it really showed and spilled over into how they treated people. So, I want to just take a moment to acknowledge him and give my condolences to the Slossberg family. I'll be stopping out to Happy Hollow Country Club this afternoon to, to say that in person, but I want to do it in public. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing those citizens' comments, we will go to item five, which is presentations. Item A is the 2019 Douglas County Fair presented by Matt Gunderson.
Chair of Commissioners, Matt Gunderson, Douglas County Fair Advisory Board Chair and member of the Friends of Extension Foundation, 7101 Mercy Road, Suite 108. Commissioner Kraft asked that I come give an update to the county board about the county fair. It actually kicks off one month from today. Four, four things, just as a refresher, we have a mission, vision and value statement, and it's really to bring urban and rural together, both within the county as well as visitors from outside the county, understanding the importance of food fiber and the industries that produce those and support those industries that, that create tax revenue to make Douglas County prosperous. Some photos from the Douglas County Fair. It certainly was the first inaugural fair in its new format. Four things, Village Point was great, and giving four locations for us. We also utilized their amphitheater. At that, we utilized science technology exhibits, University of Nebraska-Lincoln Extension here in Douglas County, put on interactive displays and presentations that went with that, as well as we had Edgerton Explorer out of Aurora, Nebraska, there, working on STEM. We did the shortest parade in Douglas County, Downer Center Promenade, Commissioner Kraft and Duda walked in the parade. We had some exhibits and troops come through that as well. And Commissioner Morgan was there as well. I knew there was one I was forgetting. I should have never named him. So, my apologies, Commissioner Morgan, as well for that. I'm going to give him the credit then for the good weather that morning to go with that. And along the way, the interesting part was, it was a new trial for both the fair as well as Village Point. And Village Point, if you will, took the journey down the path with us. And ironically, they reached out to us two weeks after the fair and said, we're in for next year already. And so, that was a great feeling there. We utilized Chance Ridge for more of the rural component of things, more of the livestock agricultural components that went with that. We had over seventy-five, close to eighty, head of livestock come in from around the counties, as well as Douglas County for that, had equipment on display, educational things around that with it, and a full kids' interactive zone. So, that was certainly a great push for things as well from the rural perspective. Again, dates this year for the fair are July 11th through the 14th. We'll enter static exhibits on July 9th. They get judged the 10th. We'll run that weekend at both locations. I would note to you, and there'll be a letter coming out to you, we are doing a kickoff again in ribbon cutting on that Thursday evening. Last year, I was attended by the governor, who spoke as well as director of AG, and was covered live by one television station and then made nightly news with another. And so, that kickoff and ribbon cutting will be at the amphitheater at 6:00 PM that night, and then we do a preview reception hosted by DeVore Claw Group that evening as well. Come see the displays and, and bring everybody together in that setting. The parade again is Saturday morning at 9:00 AM, Downer Center Promenade for that Disney-style parade. And to make that happen, it is the shortest parade in Douglas County, so it's very quick to be able to go through and, and do some things with it. Just a reminder for the general public, we do have Village Point and Chance Ridge, but we also utilize then Metro Community College for parking. So, Village Point this year, we actually have several different areas to be able to utilize at Village Point. And so, one of the biggest is, I would term it as the fair's going upscale, and we are, our exhibit hall is going to be next to the Woodhouse Bentley dealership on the east end of Village Point. So, come to the fair, buy a Bentley, whatever you'd like to do, to be able to make that happen as well. We have some other expanded areas to go with that. We're utilizing, next to Scooters, is an information booth area in that Center Promenade. We're utilizing a space next to Paradise Bakery, as well as an innovation studio down kind of by the former Foot Locker and space down there. And so, we certainly have options there. I would point out item spot eight. Last year, first year for Village Point, they had us drop the, the free air-conditioned shuttle over by the former Mimi's Cafe and Firebirds. They said it worked well, and so, we're going to utilize Marcus Theaters right there with that to be able to make that happen. And then, we are actually going, because we're kind of spread out between, if you look at the distance between one and eight, we're actually going to use a trolley. So, it'll pick up from that point. It'll go down the back street to the exhibit hall, and then we'll come down the Center Promenade with stops along the way to ensure traffic flow, people that park, those types of things to help with that. Chance Ridge, then, we're utilizing both the indoor space at Chance Ridge. We're going to utilize the outdoor arena, labeled as D, and then we're also, in a little bit, talk about an event we're going to do in the outdoor riding arena. The interesting part about the fair is that it's getting some great press, and it's a press beyond just Douglas County. The International Association of Fairs and Expositions, many of you know Eddie Bewar, who serves as, as vice chair, and so, Eddie was at a regional event and was explaining to the president and some staff about it, and they said it can't be done. And Eddie says, don't tell me it can't be done, because we already did it, and had success with it. And so, we have learned that the IFE president this year is from Erie, New York, and she covers the U.S. and the world, talking about fairs. And so, she is promoting the Douglas County Fair in a multi-location campus-style fair concept as an, if you will, outside-the-box innovative approach to be able to do that. IFE representatives are scheduling time to try to come during the 2019 fair to be able to see that everything's going on with it. Some things new for 2019 is we do have a fair manager hired as an independent contractor, part-time, in Deborah Brooks. She's hit the ground running with some design and fresh- She's hit the ground running with some design and fresh design updates for things. We have a new website expanded as well. We are expanding the parade. We already have more entrants for the parade than we did last year in total, so that's certainly great. We're expanding some things with exhibits. The neat part was, is we had folks from the community say, "I want to help," as they came through and attended the event. We're doing some expanded entertainment throughout the weekend as well. We are also looking at doing an arts, crafts, and western vendors at Chance Ridge in the arena on that Friday, Saturday for things. We're adding two shows that came in from the public in demand, so we're doing a poultry show on that Friday night, and we're doing rabbits on Sunday. Those are demands from outside the area, and so we're looking for visitors to come in and be able to do that. One of the new events at Chance Ridge and Outdoor Arena is a cowboy, they determine it as Cowboy Superhorse. It's a three-event western riding event, and so there is cowboy monte shooting with blanks using balloons in the arena. There is a barrel racing component as a second area, as well as a penning component with calves. Sorry, Commissioner Duda, no goats, but we do, we do use calves in that instance. If we went to goats, we'd have to get miniature horses to herd them with. So, but that will be on Saturday evening, and so we're going to extend the shuttle times for the free parking from Elkhorn's campus for MCC to bring folks over. It's completely, again, free to attend with that. We're also added, in any typical fair component, a few eating contests on Friday, so you don't have to participate, but if you want to judge, you're welcome to. Watermelon, ice cream, we're doing a pancake eating contest on Saturday morning tied to the Kiwanis Pancake Feed. That's part of the farmer's market that's out there, and also a cake eating contest, and we found sponsors for all that. Following the pancake feed on Saturday and the conclusion of the farmer's market, we're doing a kitty tractor pull, so if you want to come out for that and watch them do that as well, that would be fun to be able to see. Again, that ribbon cutting is 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 11th. We're using it in the Children's Hospital and Medical Center Amphitheater area at Village Point. Consider this your verbal invitation until your letter comes. We have invited all of the city mayors and councils within Douglas County to attend as part of that urban and rural coming together, and we're also sending invitations out to city administrators to attend as well. You can see some of the photos. We put together agricultural facts around that with some of the static exhibits and displays, and certainly had a nice crowd as the, we do it on the amphitheater right ahead of the opening concert at Village Point, so that works well. Again, Metro Community College is free parking. We have air-conditioned shuttles that run to every location every fifteen minutes, and so that worked extremely well last year. You know, families don't have to load the kid up, go to Village Point, repack up the stuff, go to Chance Ridge and do all that. Just throw the stroller in the air-conditioned shuttle, pops them off, wheel them around. If they live in the town and they haven't ever rode a bus before, they can check that off the bucket list as a parent as well, to be able to make that happen with things. So certainly, for those that are listening today or on the recording later on, we'd love for you to connect with us. It is douglascountyfair.org. We have just relaunched an entirely brand-new website. That's much user-friendly from what it was last year for things with it, and you can also get social with us in terms of Facebook and Twitter. We're utilizing, as well as Village Point's social media, they have twenty-seven thousand followers on Facebook and nine thousand on Twitter, and we're doing a coordinated campaign with them as well. And so certainly, if there are opportunities for the general public that do want to volunteer, underneath the website, there is a get-involved volunteer section. The full schedule are up there to be able to help with any component of the fair. There's both outdoor as well as air-conditioned, so if heat becomes a factor, certainly volunteers can choose an air-conditioned volunteer setting to be able to go with that. We've already locked in dates at Chance Ridge for 2020 and penciled them in for Village Point as well as part of that effort, so ninth through the 12th in 2020, and we have the entire facility at Chance Ridge starting next year. And so there are certainly opportunities for things. We're excited for that. On behalf of the Friends of Extension Foundation, who supports UNL Extension here in Douglas and Sarpay Counties, thank you for the opportunity to be able to host the fair and make it a showcase event for Douglas County. I used to go back to Gallup's research. Great communities have great celebrations, and so this is a way for Douglas County to be able to celebrate its heritage as well as where it's heading in the future. I welcome any questions.
You do have, backline, or urban and rural, I like that. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Matt, I like your professionalism. You've done an excellent job with every facet of planning of this year and what took place last year, which is wonderful. You might explain to the public what a static exhibit is, because
Sure.
some people may not know.
It's not rubbing your feet on the carpet and touching something metal. So a static exhibit would be anything that could be from what you grow in your garden in a horticulture scenario, it could be quilting, it could be photography, anything, if you will, that's static that sits on a shelf type of a situation. So quilting, photography, arts and crafts, as well as horticulture, home-based gardening, there's close to a thousand different categories you can enter for the fair, so we'll take anything and everything to be able to enter.
So if I have a quilt, but I didn't make the quilt, can I display that?
We'll have to check on that. I would not want to speak on behalf of the quilters. I might hit an uproar, so I would have to check on that specific rule. But I can get back to you, certainly.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite everybody to go to the douglascountyfair.org website, and I'd like to go to Facebook and click Like, along with Twitter and what was the other one?
Instagram.
Instagram. Now, I have to admit, I've never been on Twitter, Instagram, and I don't do Facebook anymore, but I understand it's wonderful. So I am really impressed with the way you've brought this up on short notice last year, and with the crew you've assembled and the many hours you're putting in to creating this. Last year, I volunteered for a few hours, and it was fun, interacting with the people and the exhibitors. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Matt, thank you for you and Mark, your work on this, and all of the people that assist you. Last year, it was kind of funny. Mary Ann, I know, was committed to something with NACO, so I had my wife out there marching with Mark and Claire, and they thought we just kind of acted like it was Mary Ann Borges and we're walking along, and some of the people even said that, and as Mark said, they did, so.
Is she charging appearance fees?
That's a compliment to both of you, Annie, my wife, and yourself, Mary Ann.
Commissioner Borg.
Well, I want to echo what Commissioner Kraft said, and thank you very much. This is, to me, it's amazing, it's exciting.
Yep.
It's a positive. But I also want to thank Commissioner Duda and Commissioner Kraft for not letting the fair die, that you worked diligently with folks to make sure that we could bring one back to Douglas County. And you've done it, and you've done it in the way that is, it's just very, very cool.
It's better utilization of the county dollars and not having to own a facility and maintenance and upkeep, per some earlier discussions.
But as, you know, the urban meets rural idea, I mean, I'm already thinking we should have you come to a NACO event and talk about this.
Have presentation, will travel.
You know what I mean? You know, this is like big, this is...
The legislature could use that, in fact.
Yes, yes. I mean, so, I mean, again, my head's spinning with options that we could do, but thank both of you for, again, having the foresight to try something, and you putting it all together and your team, and, I mean, this is really good. The unfortunate thing is, we have the fair at the same time that our National Association meets every year, so, but we're there in spirit and very well represented.
We have a great stand in the way it sounds as well.
That's right. But thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda. One of the fun and interesting things of your presentation, it is so gratifying to see what the fair is evolving into, what it's growing into. It's, it's awesome. The fair used to be controversial. We've been on this board for quite a while, and Mike and I used to get in a little tug of war every year, be cut, and I want to clarify, you mentioned county dollars. There are no property tax dollars that go into the Douglas County Fair. There were when I came on, when we talked about, you know, the shift and, and of course, the higher prioritization of property tax dollars. Commissioner Boyle, from the get-go, was not comfortable putting property taxes into a fair, and, and many of us thought, well, gee, if we cut off the property taxes, will that kill the fair? And darn if we didn't have a good enough group of volunteers to keep the thing going without property tax dollars. Now, we do put in some hotel motel dollars, I mean, you do get some.
Two-six-two, two-six-two funding.
But not one property tax dollar, and, and for a while, the fair was kind of struggling. I have a world of respect for the people that kept it going. How many years have we had a fair?
It's been, it's past the hundredth anniversary. I think it dates back to around 1898, it's late 1800s, 1890s, since the fair's been held.
We've never missed a fair, and, and now to watch it growing again and evolving into something so appropriate for Douglas County, it is exciting to see. And I commend you, Farmers National, Commissioner Kraft, and your great group of volunteers. I see Jane Hunt in here. I mean, it's, you've got a great support group that makes a very good event happen here, and how exciting that is from our end.
Yep.
To not have to put one property tax dollar into this and yet see such a great product.
It's been a great community initiative. We have an advisory board of about sixteen and bringing together business along with that and getting the support, and that's kind of, if you will, the next phase of where I see it going is really then getting second year underneath our belt, is then starting to look at pathways to careers type of a situation, so strengthening partnerships with Metro, with UNO, continue to strengthen the UNL partnership we already have, and talk about ways, the pathways to careers, and then here's the job sources that come with them in Douglas County. And so bringing that together, sort of, if you will, the next phase of what we're looking at.
Very good. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. I forgot something. All of the county departments, especially those that have something they can display, are welcome to have an exhibit there, correct?
Yes.
And that would also include any of the smaller metropolitan areas that have an exhibit there.
Yep.
Now, at our last meeting, you were talking about farms that have been in a family for a hundred years and a hundred and fifty years. Have we found any?
I have not gotten a report back that we have. The Knights of Exarban Foundation still run the Pioneer Farm, which is a hundred-year, and the Heritage Farm, which is a hundred-and-fifty-year farms, and so we've reached out to them to be able to find out. I have not heard back through staff yet if we've gotten any responses on that.
Thank you very much, that's all I had to add.
Commissioner Borg.
I forgot one thing, too, and if there's a way during the ribbon cutting event part of it, if we could recognize those that suffered during the 2019 flood?
Yes, and we were trying, we're trying to figure out a way to
Okay.
make that happen, so yes.
That, that would be a very, very good move on our part, but again, you know, we're urban, but we have rural areas, and they've suffered, and Commissioner Duda's still suffering with flooding activity on his farm, so again, we, we don't want to forget that. And then, secondly, Commissioner Kraft, you mentioned that the departments and stuff, will you be sending out, or the fair be sending out something to the departments so that they... Okay, can you carbon the commissioners on that? Because I'm thinking that we could also have, like our Office on Aging out there, our developmental disabilities folks out there, and our behavioral health folks out there for a table. We could think of something to do, but if you could let us know.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I was silent today, I was trying to be good. This is, you know, I, over the years, I have done exactly what Commissioner Duda said, and not a fan, and, but I'll tell you, you've done a really terrific job, I have to, I'm glad to say. And, you know, over, over all these discussions with Commissioner Duda, I would usually end up saying, you know, "You're wrong." But this time, I have to say in all candor, Commissioner Duda, you're right.
So are you saying the fair could survive without property taxes?
Well, I think it just shows, it shows the way I think a good functioning board should work. I mean, we have, Claire and I started out with, you know, we do have some different political views, obviously, but, I mean, today, I was invited to the President Trump thing, and I just turned it down, you know, and the funny part is that Commissioner Duda wasn't invited. So anyway, I just, I just want to acknowledge that you've done a terrific job, and I'm pretty impressed.
Thank you.
Matt, I think that's it, but let me, I have to say, I just like the vibe I feel by how you making it, how you finding, how the, how the fair's finding its own voice in an urban field, but kind of keeping the traditions there. You know, I'm interested to see how you develop this next year and what the feedback is.
We're, it's a continual evolution, if you will.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go to item six in public hearing. Item A is a continuation of last week's public hearing for, in addition to the premise license for the Players Club Golf LLC. That public hearing is still open, and we do have proof of the affidavit here that's there. Are there any citizens that want to make public comment on this item? If not, we will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borg, and seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item B is a public hearing on a possible sale of surplus property at 3015 Minky Circle. This is the public hearing for that. We'll open the public hearing. Any public want to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And I think Mr. Leahy's here, if he could answer, just a quick inquiry.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. I think this is a good news story. You got a piece of surplus property on Minky Circle as a result of the Public Safety Bond consolidation of county offices at 156 and Maple. Is that correct?
That is correct. They have moved now to the West Maple Campus, which allows for the surplus of this property. So what we're doing today is have a public hearing, but unless Mike wants to speak...
All the Leahys are here today.
Yes. You know, we're following the statute to allow us to surplus it and eventually accept bids. So we've published it twice. Building is 5,376 square feet, and had a couple of inquiries early. Hopefully, Chris will publicize the fact that there's a building that will be surplus, bids will be accepted at a future county board meeting, probably within the next thirty days. So, yes, we have, we have a vacant building.
So when you say they have moved, which...
Pardon me, Environmental Services.
Environmental Services.
They were previously at that location.
Right, so the structure at Minky Circle is now vacant?
Yes.
Okay, and how many square foot approximately are we talking about?
Fifty-three, seventy-six.
Okay, and will this be listed with sale, for sale with a realtor, or how does that happen?
No, the statute calls for this process. So previously, on May 21st, we, you had voted to set the public hearing for today, June 11th, so hopefully you will approve the motion to declare it surplus, and then we will advertise for bids. That's the process. And I have had real estate folks ask me about listing, et cetera, but this is the process. This is following the statute, and we'll see where it takes us.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the value of the property would be on the market?
I do.
Needless to say, we own it free and clear, so this will be realization of some income to Douglas County by the sale of this property.
Is it best not to say what you think?
I'm not asking it for the...
Oh, okay. I just wanted to be careful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. And so in answer to my question, we will realize some
Yes, we will.
gains at Douglas County as a result of this consolidation of services that property we already own.
Yes.
Right.
That was the plan.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You will be doing something similar soon, probably on the election commissioner You will be doing something similar soon, probably on the election commissioner building, formerly the sheriff's building.
Yes, it'll be the same process.
Sometime in the future.
Same process. There are more inquiries about that facility, probably because of the location. So that'll probably be in the fall, and we'll do a similar process.
And Jerry, it's nice to have you and Jeff taking care of the properties. I know you work hard on probation parking out on 73rd and other things all the time. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
There are no other comments. Their public hearing is closed. Their motion, second? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, their second. Seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven, committees in discussion. Item A is finance. Item one is the budget report. Is that as read?
Yes.
It is as read. With that, we do
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm sorry. We will have a finance per Commissioner Boyle and Joe Lorenz next Tuesday. So I hope all of us can attend that and have that discussion. It'll be open.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. And Community Service will have a meeting in room 903 shortly after this meeting ends. Depending on, what time is it? 11:00? Depending on what time our executive session ends, it'll be either immediately after or 30 minutes after the executive session ends.
With that, we do have need for an executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations and personnel. So with that, we reserve the right to enter to an executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations and personnel. What's the will of the board?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote. And again, we're going into executive session for labor negotiations and personnel.
Motion passes seven to zero.
You want to be the second?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, was that you? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh my goodness.
(laughing)
And you're a yes? You're a yes? All right.
We can approve the words as we change them by second.
When is your meeting starting right away, Commissioner Kraft? In half hour?
We have a meeting in half hour at 9:03.
Okay, perfect. Commissioners Rogers and Boyle, you're both yes? Okay, perfect. I got you. And Commissioner Kavanaugh left? Okay, perfect. All right, motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. All other commissioners voting yes.